Alright. It is 6:00 PM on this August 13th. So I'll call this Town Council meeting to order. Uh, recognize that we have a quorum present. Uh, welcome those in attendance and those who are tuned in online as well. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Parrott.
Here.
Mr. Yolan.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Uh, as per usual, we'll go into the invocation, uh, led by me. You're welcome to join if so inclined, or not to if so inclined. And then we will follow with Vice Mayor, Mr. Reed, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every king and every castle.
Alright, thank you. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Next up is Declaration of Personal Interest. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a declaration of personal interest concerning anything on the agenda this evening? Not hearing any. We will move into our first of two presentations that we have to start the meeting. Uh, first presentation being by Prince Edward County Superintendent, Dr. Chip Jones. Welcome, sir. Happy to have you.
Well, good evening. Um, thank you Mayor Vincent and Town Council for having me here tonight, Dr. Davis. Um, just to give you a little update about Prince Edward County Public Schools. I'm Chip Jones. I'm the superintendent. Been there for just a little over a month, going into two months now. And just to give you, just wanted to come say thank you and give you an update of everything that's been happening in Eagle Country since July 1. So I made a little transition from just a little up the road in Cumberland County. Uh, I live in Prince Edward County, born and raised in Green Bay. So Prince Edward County is home to me. Still live there. Little reference of where I live, when the FedEx truck got hit the other day, that was in my driveway. So luckily, um, as my dad would say, someone was holding his hand that day. The driver, the train was going eastbound and I don't think it was probably going as fast as it normally does. And he, the gentleman did walk away. But that was my driveway. And another blessing is my dad was at home and not on the other side where he was blocked out. So things work in mysterious ways. Um, and just to give you an update about the division enrollment, we are trending up. The enrollment in Prince Edward County Public Schools is going up. Um, so that's always a good thing. Community engagement, um, over the month of July, we hosted five meet and greets across Prince Edward County and the different fire departments. We participated in local school supply drives. We attended the National Night Out event at Parkview Gardens. We joined the NAACP and 16 churches in a wellness reception at the Fireman Sports Arena. So thank you for letting them use that. And the Reading Eagle, if you haven't seen that, that's a refurbished school bus that travels around the county. It went to the Dollar Generals in Prince Edward County, along with the Farmville Splash Pad, where students could come get books and families and just increase the literacy. And then we've been featured actually three times on local radio on WFLO and 92.9. Our new athletic director, Jeremy Eubank, who came to us from North Cross in Roanoke, um, was featured on Richard's Roundup to highlight Eagle athletics. Uh, the division administrators, um, when I first got to Prince Edward, it was a lot of, there's a lot of new, we needed to come together as administrative team. So we hosted an administrative retreat at the Bortz Library in Hampton Sydney. We had Lance Cibic, who is a speaker from Charlotte. He came to Charlotte County, uh, Charlotte, North Carolina, and he spoke on his book, "Adversity Fuels Purpose When We Create a Life of Impact and Impact and Success." So we took a little break from education and just talked about adversity. And we finalized the, um, a retreat with working on a division branding. If we're going to promote Eagle Country, we have to all be on the same page about what the Eagles stand for. So we came up with legacy fuels us, pride drives us, and excellence defines us. That was 23 people who just came together July 1 to come up with what Prince Edward County Public Schools stands for. That was a two and a half hour exercise that we just kept revisiting and revisiting. I'm a pretty simple person, so we came up with something that's pretty basic. And if you come into E, Prince Edward County Public Schools, you will see that everywhere. Cause we wanted to honor all the history in Prince Edward County, the pride of Eagle pride, and that everything we do should be excellence as a goal. Our first day of school went very well. Thank you to Hampton Sydney College, Longwood University, retired teachers and local organizations. We probably had over 85 community members with, um, coaches from Longwood, coaches from Hampton Sydney, the Longwood cheerleaders welcoming their kids back. So it went very well. Another thing that's going on is a little construction project at our elementary school. That is slated to be finished in, uh, the spring of '27. Two hours into the job, I went into a construction meeting. All I knew is I could see a roof. So, um, but just to give you a little update about what's happening, uh, in our cafeteria, we've had some temporary lighting installed. If you went in there, you would not know it's temporary. Uh, we've had our stage lighting redone, some ceiling work and some flooring for our cafeteria that'll take place next summer. The new, and the new construction, if you, if you come into Prince Edward County Public Schools and you see the A-frame part of the roof, that will be the new entrance to the school divi, to the school. And that, we've done some framing, some brick work. The brick is actually going up right now because we will take occupancy of that new part in January, actually of '26. So we can start moving classrooms and people into that, so we can start refurbishing the old part. Um, some spray foam and some roof work. And then of course, there's always mechanical plumbing, electrical, shingle roofs and gutter and a lot of underground storm piping that's continuing. So it's, it's a work in progress. And English Construction is doing that. And, um, Chris Caton, um, is the superintendent for that job from Farmville, from Prince Edward County. Jumping a little bit to our high school, um, Jeremy Eubank, our new athletic director. Prince Edward County High School was just, we entered in the T-Mobile Friday Night, Friday Night Lights Challenge. We made it through round one, so our athletic team, our athletic department earned $5,000. And so that'll be a big presentation at our August 29 halftime at our football game. And so now we're into round two where we could win up to $25,000. So, and with that, um, if you, if you're on social media, Instagram, Twitter, or X, or you can always share that, you can go to our social media and help share that. The more we get shared, the more chances we have to win. That's how we won the $5,000. So it's always good. And with that, our kids, um, our athletes, we changed Picture Day to Media Day. And you would, the high school athletes would have thought they were in college or pro when they talked more about their Media Day than their Picture Day. So it was pretty exciting. It built a lot of excitement. Um, if you followed in politics, the up and away cellphone policy is going. Um, it's actually going, it's going. So, um, so cellphones have to be up and away from bell to bell instruction and so far, so good. So for when I've been into classrooms. And we promoted that with their families, so we appreciate that. That's, I'll keep knocking on wood about that. Um, our fifth grade students, uh, one of the things that we just partnered with is Fort Pickett in Blackstone. One of the programs that they just brought in is called a Starbase Program. And it's aimed towards fifth grade students. And it promotes careers in science, technology, arts, math, and science. And so students will go there and do hands-on activities with instructors that are there. And the school divisions had the opportunity to participate. It's a five-week program. Our fifth grade classes go once a week for five weeks. Prince Edward County Public Schools was the first school division to commit to that. Air students will start in September. We'll bust them down, they'll eat lunch and they come back. And the work maybe that they would have missed at their school, at, at the middle school, the Starbase Program will tie that instruction into while they're there. So the big thing is Prince Edward County Public Schools was the first school division to commit to that. And a little bit more, our school nutrition team at our elementary, middle and high was awarded the USDA Trailblazer Award. So we did a big presentation for them at our recent school board meeting. We just have this, uh, it just went out today. I hope you've seen it. It's called the Eagle Connect. It is a community, uh, survey for organizations that want to volunteer or provide things for Prince Edward County Public Schools. So it could be a faith-based, it could be individuals, it could be mentoring and so forth. Just so we've had a lot of interest in that, just to get the community into the schools, to let them know that they are welcome there. And just, once we get all that information, we'll compile it and then we'll start reaching out to the organizations. And things may happen such as, I know the Sheriff's Department is sponsoring a meal before, for our football team before a game. And it may be just different things that, there may be an organization or people that want to come in and help reshelf library books. It may be that you want to come in and do some type of lunch duty or have a lunch. It just depends. So there's all types of opportunity. It's just to get our community into our schools and, cause the community does a lot for us. And that information is due back on Monday, August 25th. I know that's a lot, but it's been a lot happening. We're just six days into the school year, so far, so good. And, um, you know, as we look forward into the, and what's to come, one of the priorities that I have as a school superintendent is that we need to work to recruit and retain our staff. And that's one of the things, um, some of the teachers, um, at Prince Edward County Public Schools are international teachers. And, um, they're usually here for a period of five years. And when they transition out of Prince Edward County Public Schools, we have to have teachers to replace them. So we're looking at to recruit and retain our staff. And we're doing a salary study right now with the support of the Board of Supervisors to see where Prince Edward County lands in salaries and different things. And I know when I was in Cumberland, one of the things that people ask and when we're recruiting staff is, is there places to live, affordable places to live? And is there internet access and what's there to do? Prince Edward County and Farmville are the hub of that. There's something to do here and you're within a drive of a lot of places. So we're looking at that. We're always looking at how do we improve our academics? We started our instructional walkthroughs today, well, actually on Monday at all of our schools. We've visited all the schools, been in and out of the classrooms, just to see how do we improve to make sure that Prince Edward County Public Schools is the premier school division in Southside, but across the Commonwealth. And then we're always looking at safety. One of the things that I've been asked, um, since I've been here, is Prince Edward County Public Schools ever going to have metal detectors? And my answer to that is, I don't know. Because a metal detector is easy to say yes. But if we go to implement this, and it may come in time, that you have to have the manpower to man this because it can't be you do it on Monday, but not on Tuesday. You do it on Wednesday, but not Thursday. And the cost of those can range anywhere from $50,000 to $750,000. So the cost and the manpower. And if we do it in a school, it'll be elementary, middle and high, we'll also do it at athletic events. So we're working through that of how that will look. So the, my answer is, I don't know. So, or it may be a matter of time, but that is being looked at. So lots going on. Um, can't thank you enough for your support and thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Jones this time? I think, uh, you know, it's one of the rare moments where I think I can speak for everybody up here. Uh, we're happy that you're in the role that you are in. Uh, I know that the, the community has rallied behind you and with that comes lots of expectations. Uh, but your track record shows that you're pretty good at.
Well, I, I appreciate that. It's, my picture's been a lot of places and, um, the paper, social media and different things. And, um, while I think that's good, you know, that's not about getting your picture in the paper. It's about just doing the work that needs to be done. And, um, that's what I enjoy doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next presentation is Davenport and Company, General Obligation Bond Issuance Process.
Good evening. I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. It's nice to be here. This is purely informational, not looking for you all to take any action this evening. Wanted to share with you at a very high level, sort of what the process will be for the issuance of bonds, for the renovation and expansion of the fire station and the ladder truck. Um, those are the two major projects that we are working with staff on to put financing in place. And this really follows on, some of you may recall, um, in late February, we made a presentation about the town's credit profile, your financial trends, um, talking about issuing debt, um, things of that nature. So we're, we're moving that process forward. There will come a time where we'll be looking for you all to approve the issuance of debt, but we're not there yet. Um, there's a memo that was passed around. It may have also been in your agenda packet. I'm not going to read that to you. I'm going to hit the highlights here this evening and I'm happy to answer questions as we go. Um, but by way of background, again, this is what we're working towards. You all, over the last several years, have worked hard to get the town positioned to go to the bond market and have a good reception. You have strengthened your fund balances. You have, uh, put in place financial policies. Um, you have ample, you have very low debt currently. And as a result, you have ample debt capacity, meaning talking about going forward with a project of this sort, a debt issuance of this sort, 15 million plus or minus, very reasonable. You're not an over-leveraged local government. So a lot of things have lined up, um, that, that you all have purposely worked towards to put you in a position to have a good reception from the rating agencies, which I'm going to talk about, as well as bond investors. So we're, we're talking about funding, making available to the town, um, right at $15.1 million, alright? The expansion and renovation of the fire station at a, at an even 13 million and then about 2.1 million for the ladder truck. And my understanding is that's kind of a firm number that we want to hold ourselves to, 15.1 million. The schedule that we're pursuing would have you selling bonds and having you close that bond issue with money in hand by the end of the calendar year. Very doable from where we are here today in, in, in early mid-August. Three things, big picture things have to happen. There will ultimately be a public hearing at a, at a Town Council meeting. The public will have an opportunity to speak on it. It'll be advertised, um, and there'll be a dollar amount included in that advertisement. Secondly, we are going to work towards putting a, getting a credit rating for the town in place. That might be one, might be two credit ratings. Because the town isn't currently rated by the rating agencies, you have the ability to do that on a confidential basis with them and determine which combination of the ratings you want to take public for the bond issue. And that rating will come with a rating report. And that will be, uh, a big part of what investors look at when they're making a determination about, about buying the bond. So putting the credit rating in place, um, is required for this process. And we'll be working closely with staff to do that. Creating an offering document, what we call an official statement. That is a document that will go out to the world of investors and bond underwriters. And that will be the offering document that they use to make their decisions about investing and interest rates and such. That is already in process with bond council and town staff. Um, you will have an opportunity to review that and that'll be part of, approving that document will be part of a future approval. So, holding the public hearing, getting the credit ratings in place, putting that offering document together. Those are the three big tasks. And they're all kind of moving and will be moving in, in lockstep with one another. Major task, we've kind of broke them down. Um, the public hearing, we've tentatively scheduled that for September 10th, but I think we've all acknowledged that may slide to October 8th. Either date works. I think after this meeting, we'll debrief with, with staff and determine which meeting is best to target for that. But, um, your official approval would come following the public hearing and it would only take one Town Council meeting. So there wouldn't be a requirement for multiple approvals at multiple meetings. And, and again, our expectation that it would be done at either the September or the October, um, council meeting. The public hearing will include what we call a not-to-exceed amount. And I'm going to cover that in a little more detail. That will essentially establish the maximum amount of the debt that would be issued by the town. And I'm going to just kind of drill down on that in a moment. I've covered the credit ratings. Um, there are three most commonly used rating agencies, Moody's, Standard and Poor's and Fitch. We're talking with staff about what combination of those would make the most sense to talk with. Uh, we'll be putting a presentation together specifically for the rating agencies to aid them in coming out to a rating for the town. Again, we're going to do it on a confidential basis so that we know the outcome of their rating committee. Um, and we can determine the best combination of two or three of those ratings to make public, to maximize the acceptance and the, the, um, interest in the bond. So that's going to be unfolding as we go. And I've covered the POS, the Offering Document. That is a, a document that the bond attorneys really take the primary lead in drafting with input from us and staff. Page two, um, we talk a little bit about the not-to-exceed par, P-A-R amount. And if you, I think if you look at the table at the bottom, the first thing we would establish is, how much money do we need to walk away with, right? We want to close this loan. What do we need to, to fund our projects? And right now, we're working with an even 13 million for the fire station and two point, pardon? Hopefully less, right? But 13, um, 2.1 for the truck. And we've got some placeholders for the issuance costs associated with issuing the bonds. And that's going to include, um, our fees as advisor, bond council, rating agencies, things like that. It's a, it's a conservative fee, meaning I would expect that's going to come down. Um, but what you're going to see there is the total uses of funds there on line nine is about 15 and a half million dollars, right? And you're going to net the 15.1 for the projects. And when the bond closes, you get all of that money. It goes into an account of your choosing, an account that earns interest. And you're able to keep that interest while the money is being spent on the projects. So we know we need approximately 15 and a half million. Now we need to determine what is our advertised not-to-exceed loan amount or par amount, P-A-R. And that's that box on the right. If we want the 15.58 million when we close, the way these bonds would be sold, they're going into the public bond market. There are a lot of nuances to how those bonds are priced. That's not unique to Farmville, right? Any local government that goes into the bond market is dealing with something we call premium bonds and discount bonds. And those things fluctuate as rates are moving up and down, as the Fed is doing their thing. And so when we establish as part of the public hearing, the not-to-exceed, we, we, we gross up. Um, and in this case, we've grossed up about, uh, 5%. So our not-to-exceed that we would recommend show up in the public hearing is about 16.4 million. That establishes the legal cap of the amount of debt you can issue. But at the end of the day, you will only issue as many bonds as you need to net yourselves the 15.1 million. It just provides a little bit of cushion for the pricing fluctuations that will happen between the public hearing and the actual sale date. So it, it's going to be a higher number than what the projects are, but that's by design because we have to cover the issuance costs. But we also want to build in the cushion for what could be a discount pricing. And again, um, if it were a discount pricing, that's not a function of the town of Farmville's bond. It's just how the bond market is, is, uh, pricing bonds when we go. So, um, it's not committing you to 16.4 million. It's simply providing you a, a, the latitude to deal with the bond market that you're in at the time so that we can ensure you get that 15.1 million for your projects. So that will be in the newspaper, advertised as a not-to-exceed. And that will be, um, published in advance of the, the public hearing that will be held at either September 10th or October 8th. Okay, so I wanted, when you see that in the paper, sort of connect the dots. Hey, we're not borrowing 16 and a half million to, to fund 16 and a half million dollar projects. We're going to borrow exactly what we need, up to no more than 16 and a half. But the, the real guiding determination is we want to walk away with the 15.1 and we're going to issue as little debt as we can to get the 15.1. Okay? Um, schedule wise, on page three, I've, I've covered a lot of this. September 10th or October 8th for the public hearing. Uh, there'll be a bond resolution for you all to consider. That is sort of the only approval necessary for these bonds. Talking with the rating agencies, interacting with them. Again, we're putting a presentation together for them. What we typically do is, uh, and it's usually about a two-hour conversation for each rating agency. And we're covering a whole host of things. We're covering your economy, uh, locally and regionally. We're covering your tax base, your population trends, your financial performance and fund balance, your economic development, the universities, a whole host of things. A very broad conversation, um, with the rating analyst. And then they have about three to four weeks after that meeting to do their, do initial, additional analysis. They then go to a committee of rating analysts and they, they vote on the rating for the town. And out of that committee comes, here's your rating. For us, it's going to be confidential, right? It won't be published unless we decide we want it published. If we decide to publish it, it will go out to the world, if you will, the investment community. It's public at that point. And it will be accompanied by a four or five-page credit write-up. And again, that will be a big part of what investors look at, uh, when the time comes. So we're planning to interact with the rating agencies in most likely early October. That's something we're working to get finalized. By early November, our ratings are in place. Um, the documents are pretty well done. And we're in a position to put that document out to the underwriting community and say, we are accepting bids. We're going to accept bids on this day and this time. And that is what we call a competitive offering of bonds. We've got that tentatively penciled in for November 18th. So November 18th at 11 o'clock, we would accept underwriting proposals from bond underwriters all over the country. We might get five, we might get 10, we might get 15, right? There's lots of other communities in, across the country that might be selling bonds that same week. And we're going to make sure we dial in that date so that we're minimizing the competition to other issuers. We're going to dial in that date to avoid any big economic news releases to sort of find ourselves in a more stable, um, market. But call it mid-November to sell the bonds. That's when you lock in the interest rates. You're done at that point. And then we typically close or fund the loan about two or three weeks later. The rates are locked when you sell. The documents are then getting finalized and the money is transferred, um, in this case, first week of December. That's when you have the funds. They're in an account in your name, earning interest and available to be spent as needed. Okay? So there are quite a bit of moving parts to it, but it's all very doable. We, we do it all the time. Uh, and, and the, the market is very large. Uh, the investor base is very large, both individuals and institutional investors. Um, and the underwriting community is who's actually bidding on our bonds on our day of sale. The last thing I wanted to share is on page four. And just trying to give you a little bit of a sense of bit of a sense of where the market is currently. It's generally been a bit volatile, you know, there's been a bit of a lack of consensus about where the economy is headed, right? And so as a result of that lack of true consensus, the market tends to move on whatever news is available in any given day. But while it's been volatile, it has been moving lower, which is obviously the right trend for what you're doing. You want lower rates. But as, over the longer term, it's maybe moving lower, but it tends not to move lower smoothly. It tends to move sort of sawtooth, but to a lower point. That's what we're seeing. Expectation that the Fed might be cutting rates in September, maybe again before the end of the calendar year, all of those things have been helping the market for municipal bonds go lower. So we've run 20, 25, and 30-year debt. We haven't settled on one or the other, we don't have to settle on that just yet. If you go and you look, we're closing on line three, you know, early December. Line six is the final maturity, 2045, 2050, or 2055. Again, commensurate with a 20, or 25, or 30-year loan. Line eight is what we call the TIC, the True Interest Cost. And that's kind of the blended interest rate that people would say, hey, what was your bonds, what was your interest rate when you sold your bonds? And for a single A-rated town, and I would say that's the lowest rating we would expect to come out of this process. And I believe there's a reasonable expectation to be thinking about a double A rating. But we aired on the side for today's discussion on single A, and I've, again, we won't know until we go through the process, but we believe that a single A rating for you all is very achievable, and in fact, we actually would hope to get in the double A rating category. And again, that's why we do these ratings confidentially. So if Moody's comes back at double A, and another rating agency comes back at single A, we can pick and choose the best combination. So if we end up at double A, rates would actually be a little better, and payments would be a little lower, but we're in the range of a 420 on line seven. No, sorry, line eight. We're in the range of about a 4.2% blended for 20 years, up to about a 475 for a 30-year. Whatever we do, it will be fixed for the term of the loan, it won't change unless you choose to prepay or refund it in the future. So we're not going into a variable rate debt or anything like that. So we're in the, I call it the low to mid 4.5, 4% range for a 20 and 25-year financing. And you'll notice on line 15, every one of these, we're closing the loan and delivering to the town that 15.1 million. And then you can see the payments for each, this is on an annual fiscal year basis. We do right now have a partial payment expected for fiscal '26. If that causes any budgetary problems because you've adopted that budget, we can probably push the first payment into fiscal '27. May not be necessary, but we've got that flexibility. So, yeah, we'll be, obviously, as we go through this process, getting to that sale date in mid-November, we got to kind of move with the market, whatever the market's doing. It is moving in our favor these days, but there's, obviously, there's no guarantees that trend will continue. Get ourselves positioned with that document, the ratings, go into the market in mid-November, lock the rate, and the money's in hand a couple of weeks later, early December. Let me stop there. What's in the appendix is the more detailed financing calendar, but I think the highlights are most of what you all probably need to know. Happy to answer questions. Again, not looking for any decisions, but happy to talk through any part of this if there's questions.
Any questions from council at this time?
Yeah, I'm not really sure exactly who, whether Unique can answer, or Dr. Davis, or Julie, or whatever, but, you know, I know we're hoping it's going to be less. What are the contingencies for, if we don't need 15.1, and we, it only costs, I'm just making up a number 10, to do the firehouse, are we going to be able to pay that back early and reduce our payments, or are we going to, you know, use that towards payments? Or, I mean, how is that going to work? Because we don't even know how much it's going to cost right now. We're going to look to borrow the money when we don't even know yet how much it's going to cost, right?
So the goal is, well, first, I'll let Ted speak to this a little bit more, but we only borrow what we're going, so the investors want to see, we can only spend the money on what we are saying we're borrowing the money for. So we're saying we're borrowing it for the firehouse renovation expansion and a ladder truck. And we only borrow for that amount that we, you can do it two ways. Anticipation of no more than 13 million for the thing, for the firehouse, we know the truck's 2.1 and some change, and we can move forward. Or we wait, after tonight, if you adopt the PPA ordinance, we go out for solicitation, we get the solicitations back, we'll be able to tell at that point from those, from the preliminary, what the anticipated cost would be of the firehouse. So let's say it's, we know it's going to be more, I know you're just throwing out a number 10. We know from the original preliminary plan of the firehouse, it's going to be definitely anywhere between 11 and 12, without a doubt, because of what he showed as cost. We definitely don't want more than 13. So we would, we would do, if we have a strong number, we would only do the number that we're going to sign off on for the construction, let's say it's 12. So we would only do 12 and the 2.1, which is 14.1, but what he's talking about before with the par, it's got to be a little bit more so we have a cushion not to exceed for the interest rates.
Yeah. And I get that, I just was trying to figure out what the process was, is, you know, and so we'll, so if we go ahead and do the bond and we get 15.1, we'll put it in the bank and save the interest, but, and we don't, we end up only needing 12 for the firehouse instead of 13. Then the question I really have is, is what happens to that million dollars, and will we be able to give it back, so to speak, without a penalty or anything like that? Because even if we get it, we get to collect the interest on it, which is awesome, but, you know.
Right. So a couple of things. I think you all have a choice to, what we've laid out, is borrow based on the estimates that you will have, right? And we're talking about 15.1. Alternatively, you could push this entire schedule back so that the borrowing occurs in lockstep with the final project cost from your contractor, right? So, I mean, you do have that option, right? Borrow based on an estimate, or borrow later when the actual guaranteed maximum price, or whatever it is the contractor's giving you, so you know. If you were to do the former, which is borrow based on the estimate, and there, the project cost came in a million dollars less than what we had borrowed, you're not able to give the money back that immediately, because these bonds will have a 10-year no prepayment clause, right? That's standard in the municipal bond. But what local governments often do is, one of two things. They can use that excess funds, or those on, the extra million dollars in my scenario, to make the payment during construction, right? So you have a home for those dollars if you need to make the payment during construction, which frees up a year of debt service in your budget. Or you write the authorization broadly enough where maybe you could put that million dollars towards some other public safety project. So you've got some options, but I think that first question will be, do we want to borrow based on the 15.1 estimate, or whatever it ends up being? Or do we want to get a little further down the road and get firm pricing in hand for the project, and then put the borrowing in place? And you have that option. And, you know, don't need a decision on that this evening. I think you can evolve on that as you look at the PPA process and you get that selection. We can always push pause on the process and, you know, wait a month, wait two months, whatever the case may be. So you've got that flexibility.
When you say we can always press pause, I would like to know about the flexibility, because if the interest rates end up changing in September, and talking could be 50, 1 bit, something like this, we're going to get a better interest rate over the entirety of the loan. Can we go down this path, and depending on what the market's doing, what the Fed is doing, can we resubmit? Like, how locked in are we to the first bid that we're going to get?
So in our schedule, we have a sale date of November 18th, right? And let's say that's the date we actually do, right? You have until November 17th to say, hey, we're going to push pause, right? So you could do it the day before, and just say, we're not ready to take our bids tomorrow, we're on hold, right? And that happens. It's not really that big of an issue to say, we're going to just push pause on this. So you have literally up until the day of the sale. Once you take the bids on November 18th, that's when you're locked in. So, and you get those bids on November 18th, it's a bidding platform that the municipal market uses, and it would be a very uncommon, and I think it would have some implications down the road for you all when you access the market again. If you took the bids on the 18th and you said, I don't like them, let's reject them. That, we do not want to get to that point. We want to be able to be in a position, if there's concern about the market, or the interest rate, or the project, we want to be in a position to know that in my scenario by the 17th. Because pausing it the day before, nobody's going to blink an eye. The morning of the 18th, bids in hand, and we're wavering, that's when we would have issues, that we don't want to be in that position. Does that help answer?
Yeah, it does. The 16.4, where you max out, the not to exceed limit, I might be mistaken, but I feel like we started this between 11 million, going up to about 13.2. Now we're looking at another 3.2 million not to exceed. How often do we come in under that range in situations like this?
Well, what, the beginning point for our borrowing is, for the purposes of our illustration, is there would be presumably a consensus, yes, we want 15.1, right? So that's the first number. We need 15.1 to pay for this and this. Now, maybe by the time we get to the market, you all have said it's 14.9. But for my example, we want 15.1, and then we know we have to pay for some issuance costs, right? So we got to add that on top, and we have gotten to that 15.58. We need to generate from this bond issue 15.58 million. That will allow you all to get the 15.1 and pay the cost of issuance, right? So 15.58 we need. And then our 16.4 is a little higher than that, obviously, and that's trying to account for what I've been sort of referencing, but not going into a great deal of discussion about, which is if we potentially get what we call a discount bid from an underwriter. And we really can't control that, that's dictated by the market. If you were selling bonds today, and this is the other way, if you needed 15 and a half million, you might actually only issue 15 million. So you're actually issuing less bonds, 15 million to get 15 and a half million. That's because you would get a premium from the bond underwriting. We're, by grossing it up, we're allowing for a bond discount, which we haven't seen in quite a while, but we don't want to assume that that won't happen. So the 16.4 that I'm referencing as your not to exceed, what will drive the borrowing is, what I said earlier, we want the 15.1 plus the cost of issuance. And if you don't have to issue 16 million to get that, we won't. We'll issue as low amount of bonds as possible to get that 15.1 plus cost of issuance.
Okay, thank you.
Just for reminder, the budget actually has 16 million. 13 for the firehouse, 3 for the ladder truck. 13 and 3. We already know the ladder truck's less than 3. The goal was to get the firehouse for less than 13, so that we're under both.
I think the, you know, as the manager said, getting the PPA out, getting that partner in place, these other things can be moving in parallel if you want them to, while you're getting that party in place and getting better information from them on the market and the cost of the project. So that as we approach, again, in our scenario, that November 18th sale date, we can fine-tune the amount, literally up to about a week or two ahead. So when, if we're taking bids on November 18th, we want that, the world to be looking at it beginning around November 10th, right? We want to give them a week or so to be looking at it, doing their due diligence. So we want to have a pretty good idea of what we're borrowing about a week ahead of the bond sale date. But again, you can, you can, you know, you can delay the sale if there's something that is coming up at the last minute without any problem. We just wouldn't want to do that, as I said, the day of sale, whatever day we pick.
Many additional questions at this time? I hear none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll be back in due course. Appreciate it.
All right. We will roll into our public hearing component. The first public hearing we have is for ordinance number 240, establishing a PPEA policy ordinance that was referenced earlier. I will remind folks, as we get into public hearing and public comment period, that you come up to the front, speak into the microphone, please state your name and address. You get three minutes to speak. We ask that you address the body as a whole, not individuals, and that public hearings and public comment periods are not back and forths, but there are opportunity for us to hear your opinion and what is on your mind and what matters to you. Ms. McKay, do we have anyone signed up for ordinance number 240?
No, sir.
All right. Well, we'll close up, ordinance number 240, establishing a PPEA policy ordinance. And we'll go to resolution number 2025-0802 to amend land lease for tenants of the Farmville Regional Airport. I will say, before we get started on this, that there will not be a vote on the lease this evening. That is a change in the agenda. That was largely due to one of the leases bringing up an issue. When we dove into looking at that issue a little further, we realized that maybe there was an area in which we needed to come to a better understanding and agreement with the stakeholders out there. Because of the way the leases are lined up with leasing land versus some of the structures, there's a little bit of work, I think, that needs to be done on our part and with y'all. And so the idea would be that we'll go back to the drawing board on that component with our legal counsel and y'all, and trying to come up with something that works for everyone. Yeah, some of this is, I can say it, not everybody will say it, but some of this is derived from the original lease. You know, the new lease is one that mirrors another locality, but that old lease, you know, sometimes we open up these cans and we discover some interesting things inside once we do. And so there's some things that need to be addressed there. So with that said, we want, we didn't want to counsel the public hearing because we'd already advertised for it, so we'll still hold it. You are still welcome to come and give your thought. You are still welcome to come and give your, your thoughts on that. Cause I know there's also the rate stuff as well as some of those lease components that, that were of concern. And so at this time, yeah, like I said, guidelines, three minutes, please speak into the microphone. And Ms. McKay, have anyone signed up to speak?
Mike Lewis.
Excuse me, Mr. Lewis, I apologize. I do want to also, I meant to do this. I wanted to apologize to my fellow council members. I, I got the information at 3:30 today and that left me, you know, if I'm conservative, I, I allot like 20 minutes per phone call. I can't call everybody at the same time because that's illegal, that's a meeting. So I got to call everybody individually. And that's usually about 20 minutes, which have been about two hours and 20 minutes. And I didn't have the time to make it happen. So I wanted to apologize to my fellow council members. I'm usually very proactive in letting them know what's happening. I apologize, Mr. Lewis.
I won't be very long. It's very difficult to hear in this room. The acoustics in the speaker are not very easy. I built my hangar at the Farmville Airport in the late eighties. I've been out there for, I don't know, 40 years, long time. And Farmville is a really nice airfield. The only really major improvement I've seen in the last long while was the extension to the runway and the ramp, redoing the ramp. And of course you've done fences and whatnot and security and all that. But we have had for the longest time, a contract or agreement with the town. And I don't remember when the town took over the Farmville Airport, but that's been what, 15 or 18, 20 years? It's a long time. But our agreement with the town has been straightforward. That if for any reason you guys needed our property, that we would have the ability to get a fair market value and that you could purchase it. This agreement you've got now allows you to just possess our property and give us nothing. By state law, that's illegal. By federal amendment, Fifth Amendment, that's illegal. My dad, I know, had two pieces of property in two states that the state had to take eminent domain and take part of it. We all understand that. I mean, if you've got a better good and you need our property, we can't stand in the way by law. You have the right. But by law, you have to compensate us for our investment. There's no question about that. I've talked to a couple of lawyers and a couple of investors, municipal, municipality investors. They've all said the same thing to me, don't even think about signing this agreement. And I, there's a crowd of guys back here, they're at our airport, hangar owners and aircraft owners. I don't think there's a single one of us that'll sign this agreement as it currently stands. The difference in this agreement versus what we have a 20-year history. I was talking to Jim. Jim said, I've been there for 20 years, I've never seen it change. $480 a year to help the town of, the town maintain the grass and whatnot. I can ride my zero turn lawnmower around my hangar one time and cut all the grass that's necessary to cut around my hangar. There's a stretch I looked at the other day, that why that they've sprayed Roundup on and killed up against the hangar. Great ideal. So the ma, the maintenance of the hangar or the maintenance of the airport is something that you guys are saddled with and we don't mind helping you. But I got to say something, it's, Morgan tells me you guys are not going to vote on this and that you're going to take another look at it. I don't know why we don't have what we had already that everybody's in agreement with. And this looks like this is a no-go as far as I'm concerned and a lot of people.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Appreciate your time.
Ms. McKay?
Jeffrey Cornblum.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Cornblum. I'm one of the hangar owners at Farmville Regional. I think you've given me the time to talk here today. I'll try to be brief. Without repeating everything with regard to eminent domain, yes, that was one of my points. I purchased my hangar, certainly if the town needs to take it, I understand that. Pay me for my hangar, I'll decide if I want to rent. I think there's enough said about that. I'm glad you're not voting on this tonight. And when you go back, please take a look at that. I think that's probably the number one issue. The number, the second thing I wanted, there are three points. The second thing I wanted to talk about is in Article Four, eminent domain rights. And it says you can condemn the area wholly under the township's current domain right. I'm not sure what those are, but certainly if the structures are in disrepair and you say they're hazard to people, hazard airplanes, hazard, you can condemn it and it's gone. That's on me. But if you decide, well, we want to put an avionics shop and mechanic shop and this is going to be good for the airport, which I would agree, and we want five of these hangars, you shouldn't be able to just say, we're condemning those and they're not yours anymore. That, I think that needs to be visited, please, and make the wording proper that if it is in bad shape and gets condemned, understand. But if you just want it, that's, that's a different story. The third point that I want to bring up has to do with 180 days, 180 days for damage repair. That seems like a reasonable time period. I don't have a problem with 180 days. Problem I have with it is getting contractors is really hard. I, I spent two years trying to get a guy to dig the hole for a patio in my yard and I never got it. And trying to get something done on my roof, I called three people, one shows. He gives me a quote a week later. I accept it right out because no one else is coming. And he says, couple of weeks. Well, four months later, he says, I'm sorry, I can't do that job. Well, I was trying to get it done, that wasn't on me. And I think this should say not just that, that the township gets to decide if there's going to be extension. I think it should say that if the owner is putting forth good faith to get the repairs done, it's out of his hands, that he gets an extension. Thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing the new write-up. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McKay?
Denzel Tice.
Denzel Tice, I live out near Hampton, Sydney. Thank you for the opportunity to express my views on the proposed lease agreement. I support the town increasing the airport land lease fees and the town's interest in correcting some long overlooked hangar issues. But I'm concerned with the drastic change in tone and language in the new lease. The town's public notice stated that the purpose is to amend the land lease. But rather than simply amend the current lease, there has been a complete rewrite without a clear explanation as to why this new lease is so drastically different from the current lease. And the new lease reads as if it is primarily directed towards new construction rather than those currently on site. The August 6th Herald article stated that the length and cost of those leases is part of what will be up for discussion with the town council. I believe both of those, length and cost of the lease, can be addressed by simply amending the current lease. Therefore, rather than approve this new agreement, I ask that the council amend the current agreement by adding the rent calculation based on 20 cents per square foot and changing the term of the lease to the initial five-year period. Other issues of concern can be addressed if the town would just begin enforcing or taking advantage of current federal and state requirements as well as updating the airport rules and regulation. The current lease states that the renter is subject to such rules and regulations now or herein after enacted and/or imposed upon the users by the town or other governmental authority, that the tenant will comply with all requirements of the town manager and will obey and abide by all rules and regulations. For example, the FAA has a policy on use of hangars at obligated airports and lists storage of household items and long-term storage of derelict aircraft and parts as uses not permissible. When asked, how does the use of a hangar affect the rent charged? The FAA response is if a hangar is being used for an aeronautical use, the airport sponsor will generally charge the tenant the airport's standard rate for aeronautical leases. But if the hangar is used for non-aeronautical purpose, such as storing household goods or derelict aircraft, the sponsor must charge a fair market rent for the hangar, must charge. At least one hangar at the airport for more than four years has only been used to store household goods. The hangar measures 2,392 square feet. One storage company in Farmville charges 76 cents per square foot for a 300-square-foot unit. Using those figures as fair market value means that according to the FAA policy, the town must charge $1,817 per month for the non-aeronautical use of that hangar.
Mr. Tice, your time is up.
Virginia Department of Aviation also requires town to conduct a physical count. In closing, I'd like to restate my request, the town not adopt the new proposed lease agreement, but rather simply amend the current lease by adding the price per square foot, five-year lease. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will mention that if your comments exceed the three-minute period, feel welcome to email them to council and I. Our emails are on the town website and that way we'll have the full breadth of your comments. Ms. McKay?
Had an email from Magnus Wyman. I own hangar F2 at the Farmville Regional Airport and I want to ask you to put my name on the sign-up sheet for public comments. My question is if it is true that the only three situations where, when the town can take ownership of a hangar without compensation are, number one, if the lessee elect to not enter into a new lease agreement at the conclusion of a 20-year lease. Number two, if the lessee default on the lease agreement. Number three, if the lessee relinquish the lease. Thanks, Magnus Wyman.
Thank you. Have anyone else signed up to speak? Ms. McKay?
An email from Shelley Gryles. Golden Leaf Tobacco Company, Malcolm Bailey, owns a hangar at the Farmville Airport. My understanding after speaking with Farmville's town manager, Scott Davis, is that no vote will be taken tonight regarding the airport land lease agreement and a revision will be made to the proposed lease agreement. I would like for the hangar owners to be sent a copy of the new proposed lease and for a public hearing to be held regarding these changes prior to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Kaylee.
Good evening, Council. Scott Kaylee from Lynchburg, Virginia, work over in Chesterfield as well. I've been in the aviation business for a very long time. I've run a lot of different businesses in aviation. I've got basically all the T-shirts and I've been looking to come to Farmville to place my own personal airplane as well as possibly start up a couple of businesses. And the current lease or the new lease as written really is sort of a deal breaker. And I've just been dipping my toes in the water and, you know, really think I've found a, a location that, that could be advantageous for business purposes, cost effectiveness, as well as employ maybe four to six people initially in doing aircraft refurbishment, avionics, that kind of stuff out there at the Farmville Airport. And with the amended lease agreement, I think that that actually could be a deal breaker the way that it's written due to the fact of some of the provisions and it do, just don't seem business friendly. So I'm glad that you tabled, tabled this particular matter for the time being. I would implore you to go about business as you revisit this issue and perhaps include some of the stakeholders. I'd be happy to also represent some interests if we are going to be included in some of those discussions before a draft agreement and lease agreement is put forth, of which I've been writing lease agreements for the last month anyway, for airplanes instead of ground. But I think that would be that, that activity could be beneficially advantageous, both to the town, the stakeholders that are currently in place and the stakeholders that are hopefully coming forth to build businesses here in the Farmville Airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Morgan Donovan.
I'm Morgan Donovan. I, I live in Buckingham, 232 Jericho Road and I own hangar D2 over at Farmville Airport. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all tonight. But I'm going to amend what I was going to say and leave out all my bullet points in the middle since Scott called me earlier today and shared that y'all are not going to vote on it and that my understanding from the conversation I had with Scott was that some of us at the airport, I'm, I know you can't include all of us because if you include everybody, nothing ever gets done. But we'll include some of us to put some comments in during the development process of the new lease proposal. So I'm going to leave y'all tonight with simply a few, a few comments. The $1 million liability insurance policy, that's a tough one to swallow because the Commonwealth of Virginia only charges $250,000 for us to register an airplane in Virginia. And the other comments on the other items, I'm just going to leave those out, but I'm going to go to my closing comments. Now with these new adverse to us tenant conditions, it bears the question, does the town in fact want the airport to dwindle and die or to be vibrant and thriving? It seems like the former, but if the desire is for the airport to thrive and prosper, that can be accomplished without this disastrous monstrosity of a new lease that looks like it was copied from somewhere that doesn't want general aviation activities, but wants only training of future airline pilots like Danville or Lynchburg or scheduled passenger flight service only like Charlottesville. For a vibrant and thriving airport, a few tweaks to the existing lease would be sufficient along with an active engagement of the local aviation community and a desire to operate and manage the airport as the asset that it truly is and not to be thought of as a liability in a money pit. Our local pilot community has the ability and the experience to help with the management of the airport facility if y'all will allow us to partner with you. Thank you. Y'all have a good night and I, I look forward to seeing a much more friendly lease coming out shortly. Thank y'all, have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Darian Lipscomb.
How y'all doing? Good evening. Uh, Darian Lipscomb of Prospect, currently a student pilot with Magnus. Not going to say too much as well, considering the change. But Farmville, of course, some people may think it doesn't bring in a lot of activity, like flying. Liberty, Liberty University comes in all the time. You have people coming from Charlottesville, Lynchburg, Richmond, Danville, other states. Majority of those people either playing golf, coming in for like green front furniture to see Farmville, of course, which will bring revenue into town as well. I think as far as issues with the airport, I would say the biggest thing, and hopefully the person isn't here, but like we said, some of the hangars are just kind of sitting, you know? So the biggest thing is like maintenance. So like airports, you always want to have a maintenance hangar. So of course if your aircraft goes down, you can have somewhere, you know, you can go fix it that's close by. Most people have to go to, as was stated, like Lynchburg or Charlottesville, Richmond, fly all the way out there, get it fixed, get it back. The issue is as well, if your aircraft can't make it out there, like you have to have a maintainer somewhere. So if it was in Farmville, there's a big hangar in Farmville, right by the FBL, the facility, that just sits there. It's like you have all this opportunity for, like I said, maintenance is the biggest thing. And it's just sitting there. thing, and it's just sitting there. So like investment-wise, like how Farmville, the golf course did to where I think, I believe y'all sold it to investors, it thrived. I think y'all can bring in like a maintenance hangar. I don't think y'all can really touch the leasing or owner, so I don't know how that would go. The other thing is, like I said, I'm a student pilot, so I'm trying to get more youth into aviation, so the Farmville area, and we just did a Young Eagles event, and we have one coming up in, I believe, October. So I'm getting more, more youth into aviation, and of course that'll provide more careers in the future as well. Then you have the military, of course, they fly in, so I'm military as well. So, Jalen Patterson of Farmville, he flies Blackhawks. We use that as for approaches in Farmville and such like that. Like I said, I had more comments, but I guess everything else would be, like I said, settled later on. But I can pretty much go all day. But one more example is Hampton Sydney's College President, the commencement speaker for this last graduation, he just flew in, the commencement speaker, from a different state, and that was a private jet, so that was actually during the Young Eagles event day, and so we got to see, you know, private jet come in and all of that good stuff. It's just, it could be, like I said, it could thrive way more. I know we used to do fireworks there that cut off, for whatever reason. I know we used to do, I think, like $5 a car.
Mr. Lipscomb, your time is up.
Yes, ma'am. But I know that was like $5 a car, you know? It'll bring in revenue as well if we could push the fireworks back, but I know that's probably unlikely. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
No one else has signed up.
All right. We will close the public hearing. I appreciate everyone turning out tonight. This chamber is the people's house, and so you're always welcome here. Thank you for showing up. Ms. McKay, we have public comment period now? Do we have anyone signed up for a general public comment period?
Fay Green.
All right.
Thank you, Fay Green, 207 First Avenue, and I just wanted to thank publicly Jay Wilkerson for the work that he has done in this town. The boxes around the courthouse and down at the crossover where the trail crosses are incredible. If you haven't seen them, each one is a work of art. The welcome to Farmville signs, beautiful. I just, if you haven't thanked Jay, thank him, and thank you for hiring such a talented, gifted young man who is just, makes me happy every day I walk past any one of his creations. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
No one else has signed up?
We'll close public comment period and roll into the rest of our agenda. You have the consent agenda before you, the draft minutes of the 2025-07-02 work session and the 2025-07-09 regular council meeting before you. If there are no changes, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Next up is the finance report. I assume we'll have our deputy, Ms. Julie Moore, give the finance report.
Good evening. You have the July financial report in front of you. For the ABM project, we earned $1,599 for July. At VIP, we earned $14,822. At the sweep accounts, we earned $5,227, and with LGIP, we earned $35,738. So for the month of July, we earned $55,786. Any questions?
Not hearing any. Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, please, do we have a motion to accept the July 2025 financial report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Next up is old business. We have requests to adopt resolution number 2025-08-01, authorizing the finance director to transfer funds from the general fund contingency account to the town manager's department for engineering and consulting services related to the sidewalk asset management plan. Is there any discussion on this resolution at this time? This is something that we've discussed in work session a number of times, and also discussed during the budget season.
I make a motion that we adopt number 2025-08-01, authorizing the finance director to transfer funds to the general fund contingency account.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Now we'll go into the new business. We've got a request to adopt ordinance number 240, establishing a PPEA policy ordinance. We had a public hearing for that earlier, to which no one spoke, and this was also discussed in work session last week. Any additional discussion at this time?
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 240.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. No vote on B, so we'll move past that for the time being. Request to adopt resolution number 2025-08-03, the MOU for the Joint Emergency Communications Center, once again, longtime discussion topic, and also multiple work sessions. Do we have any additional discussion or motion at this time?
I make a motion we adopt resolution number 2025-08-03, MOU Joint Emergency Communications Center. Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion? Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is request to adopt resolution number 2025-08-04, authorizing the use of FY26 NG911 additional funding grant to support enhancements to our emergency 911 operations. Do I hear a motion or any discussion concerning that?
I move that we adopt resolution number 2025-08-04. Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Excuse me. Mr. Davis, town manager's report.
So, we have, as you remember, I think last month during our council meeting, we had a big storm that created issues with three infrastructure failures under roads that had old corrugated drainage pipe. Two have been replaced. We're waiting, and those two are heard in Winston. The third one that is not yet done is Blanton Street. It's an arch-type pipe. So, that infrastructure, we're still slated to receive that in about three weeks, give or take. There was no state declaration, so there's no technical funds to put in for. However, we have been in contact with VDM and understand that we can submit to the state, I think it's through a grant-type process potentially, whether it gets awarded by the governor or not, it's to be determined. So, once we have that cost, a better estimate, we'll be able to submit that. I think the, the low, the minimum was $29,000, and we'll surpass that by far, as far as material and, and things like that for those three. So, just wanted to give you an update on that. As you know, I think you've been individually, as the mayor said before, contacted by Councilman Yolan about a constituent on Buffalo, about Buffalo Street, the public works director, myself, and fire chief, being that that's the largest emergency vehicles we have met there. And you'll notice that the avenues, as we call them, are wider streets, and so there are permit parking on each side, and those streets in that older section are not as wide. In that area of Buffalo Garden, Appomattox, they're not as wide. And Buffalo is actually one of the only ones in that section that had parking on both sides. So, after this conversation with all of you, we feel that we can solve that, some of that by no parking on the south side of the street, and so that's being taken care of. And that's from St. George to Appomattox. Actually, it was done today. So, didn't realize it was gonna be that fast. Another bit of information, the fire department, we've been talking about this, will start 24-hour shifts on August 31st, which leads me into, obviously, they hired a, another full-time firefighter, and then the part-time money, it's not, it's, that, that's not actually a position that's, that's pooled money to have part-time people that can come in and fill. And so, two have been, that are firefighters in other localities that are coming that will be part-time to fill in when needed for that. Just to give you some other, since we're on personnel-type things, just to give you an idea, we have filled three public works positions, Labor 1, Labor 2, and an equipment operator, and that's just recent. We have one police officer that's in recruit school, full-time bus driver. He went from part-time to full-time, and then we've hired another part-time, and there's still some openings. So if you know of anybody that wants to drive for the fab part-time, let us know. Internal vacancies, we, we filled some positions of supervisor and dispatch. Unfilled, we have one water treatment plant operator open, that's going through the process. We currently have three police officer positions, potentially more. We'll, we'll find that out in the near future. But we do have, thankfully, some applicants that have applied and are in the background process, so we'll see how that goes. And that goes towards my next point of, we did our first, that I know of, Hiring Expo, where we were, HR, human resources was at the train station, I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, you were there, nine to three? Was that the timeframe? And so, some of those, we had gotten some applicants, they were doing onsite interviews, and those were scheduled. We had 13 ahead of time, three were no-shows. However, we had several come off the street, and we interviewed eight walk-ins that had seen the signage up and came in. So, and then we handed out approximately 40 applications overall from walk-ins. So, some were interested in positions we didn't have, like a potential IT applicant for the future, public works, water plant operator, police, so I think it was an eventful day, which leads me to the next piece of giving you a count ahead of time. From an health insurance standpoint, which was a debacle, so even, even with some of these new hires have not filled out all of their paperwork, right? So, we don't know for sure, but currently, as of today, and that's without any of, some of the new ones, because they have 30 days once they're hired to, to decide on benefits. We have 101 employees on our health insurance. We potentially could have four more based on the new hires, as I said. Two of the 101 have come from employees that had previously received reimbursement, and as of now, we have not lost an employee because of the change in the reimbursement. The count for next year looks, locks in either the end of September, October. They did September this past year, but we think that's because they were going for renewal, so it could be October, that we have to have that 100 number on the books for, to not be in the pool any longer. One of the things, even though we have some new hires or not selecting insurance, is you gotta think, you gotta, over time, the last few years, we've had retirees, retirees, right? And with that, we hire younger, we've been hiring some younger folks to come in and fill those positions. One of the benefits of being younger is, and your parents have really good insurance, they can stay on till they're 26 years old. And so, when we do hire younger folks, they may not take the insurance when they come, because they may not have to. It's not an expense that they have to take. So, there's, we're, we're getting, we're getting newer people, replacing people that have been here and retired, but by doing that, younger, they don't always take the insurance. Just keep that in mind as well. And then, the last one, I'm gonna leave to Julie, and that is, this is her project, kinda, but she spearheaded it for me, and that's the splash pad update.
So, the status of the splash pad?
Is this another one of those situations where you just got the stanky egg? What just happened?
So, about a month ago, we got some drawings from the architect, and we put it out to bid, and we had a pre-bid construction meeting, and one of the contractors that came said, well, is this in the floodplain? Well, we didn't, we had never thought about that. That was something we felt like the architect should have considered. Well, lo and behold, it was in the floodplain, so we had to cancel the bid, and so now we're getting an elevation certificate. Ashley and Kim have a meeting with the engineer that's working on that Thursday, and we're supposed to get our final drawings on Friday, so hopefully within the next week, we will put it out to bid for a second time. So, that's the latest on the splash pad.
And Hill Studios had to hire an engineer because they didn't have anybody on staff for that.
So, all of our regional business, business leaders should know it happens to us as well on occasion.
Yes. Yes.
I was curious to know, do you have any anticipation as to where you think the bids might come in at, as far as cost is concerned?
I, I looked it up, and I know back in October of last year, I told you, based on the architect, they were saying $320 a square foot, which would have been put in at $297. Six months later, he told me that his last project that he did was $400 a square foot, so that would bring it to $372. Honestly, I have no idea where it's gonna fall until we put it out to bid.
Is that cost associated with just cost of materials going up, or is it just the design concept itself?
I don't think it's the, I think it's probably the cost of the materials, because it's a pretty simple design, and it's probably gonna go up a little, because we have to do the drop floodplain. Did I say that right? Thank you, drop, I got it halfway right. Drop floodproofing.
Do we, may I? Do we still have the, remember originally, we talked about going in and getting the pre-built ones, the things, do we still have those numbers so we can compare? Do we still have those numbers so we can compare when the final bids come in a little bit?
Those would probably change as well, as far as cost. They didn't have changing areas, they just had bathrooms. We went from the non-pre-built because we talked about having change in area in, for the facility.
Could we possibly look at the prefab side of things versus the changing areas to see what kind of possible cost savings could be incurred with the comparison of the two? Would that be possible?
We can, we can see if they can floodproof them too. That cost wasn't, that cost wasn't when we had those prefab of the floodproofing. So yeah, we can.
Why do we need a change in area? Why can't we just have a bathroom?
My thoughts exactly.
I mean, why? I don't see any reason to have a change in area.
It's just something we agreed upon at first. I mean, we said we were gonna have a change in area. I mean, to change it, it just depends upon how many people want to change it.
I think it's a waste of money.
I think it would save us a dramatic amount of money if we can use a, so to speak, cookie cutter building that is standardized versus something that is specialized. I think we owe it to the town citizens to see if we can trim the cost.
Can we just get the cost on both and then make a decision? Thank you.
Is there, is there any area over there that is not floodplain? Because I know flood maps have edges. And I know they're sometimes silly. The campground we used had 50 feet up in the air, and one cabin was in the floodplain, and it was ridiculous. But, so that, there is no space there, okay?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea as far as, you're mentioning the possibility of, I'm assuming, building up an area of dirt to build on top of, to raise it above a floodplain? Am I correct in that?
No, we just floodproofed the building.
Okay, excuse me.
It's how it's constructed.
You just get it above grade or whatever flood stage is. Got you.
Have we thought about building this bathroom and changing facility on top of a pontoon boat?
So we need a couple of options. All right. Good. All right, a couple of options. You guys have else?
I have something else that I asked him to say, and he must have forgot. I just wanted to be out there that we're working on the lead and copper survey. So there are two of our meter technicians going around knocking on doors and leaving door hangers, and I just wanted the people to know that it's not a scam. They have a Town of Farmville shirt on, and it either says Mitch or Chad. And if you have concerns, you can always call our office and ask, hey, are they supposed to be in our area? And they'll be glad, you know, we'll let you know, yes, they're scheduled to be in your area. And they're also encouraging everybody that if you don't want them to go under your house, that you can always go under there yourself, take a picture and send it to us, and you'll get $20 off your utility bill.
Do you have any idea just roughly how many people are still left to respond?
At least 2,000.
I saw Mitch the other day. It was a nice time.
Do we have a deadline with that, Julie?
We do, I mean, it's kind of an ongoing, it's like, you have to constantly keep it updated. But I think we have like three years. And then after that, whatever your unknowns are, then you have to start replacing them. So we want to get this done sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, you got anything else? All right, I'll go around the room. Mr. Hardy?
Just want to thank everybody that was here tonight, speaking their mind. It's always nice to see folks put in a little effort to help us out and willing to actually go the extra mile to help with stuff.
Mr. Hunter?
Well, since Dr. Davis took my thunder on the anthem, I just want to remind everybody that we still probably need to think about the Police Department and what they're going through, and salaries that have been raised around us over the last few months, the starting salaries, and the pain that the chief is going through by losing people because others have raised their salaries to just astronomical amounts.
Yes. Thank you, young man, for coming in and speaking your mind about the airport. Darius, I think was your name. Really appreciate you coming in and taking the time to participate. Reminder, I don't want to step on anyone's toes here, but Chief, don't we have something cool going on tomorrow at the Fish and Pig? That's right, that's the Blue Christmas fundraiser all day long. And sorry to plug that, folks, I mean, I don't want to step on any lines or anything, but yeah. Please participate in that as well.
Mr. Barrett?
I think I've covered all the questions I have for tonight.
Mr. Dwyer?
Another thing, Mayor.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir, another thing.
Ms. Amos?
Yeah, I have an observation from the airport lease deal. Other than public hearings, I feel like that we need to get community input when drafting ordinances other than the public hearing, like getting ahead of the game on like engaging the public earlier in the ballgame. Whether it be like a town hall, a workshop. Because this whole lease process, now we're having to go back. And we wasted time. And if we had just listened to what they had to say, we could have like corrected some things. And I feel like, you know, maybe, like if we're working on the sidewalk thing, if we have some public input from folks. I mean, people don't show up to meetings, but if we have like town hall meetings and listen to some people and engage the public, then we can hear, I mean, this is our community, and we need to talk to our people. We need to talk to the stakeholders in our community, so you know, that's a comment I have to make.
Thank you. All concluded, it was a fairly uneventful stretch from our last meeting to this month. It felt like, it's always odd when the weeks fall so that you've got almost a month between, like a full four weeks between meetings. It's a long time. I want to echo some of the sentiments about participation today. Thank you. It's always, I mean, it makes me happy when I, I know most of the folks have left now, but when I look out and see a big crowd in the in the chamber, I'm always psyched. You know, whether it's people coming to yell at me or not, I'm psyched because they're participating, and participation is key. I welcome everyone who came in, and thank you for taking the time out of your day to do so. The young man, Mr. Lipscomb, raised some points about what the airport brings to the Town of Farmville, which is one of the central focuses of why this originated, right? Because we look at these entities like we looked at the golf course, and it's like, okay, here is this entity that exists a distance outside of town. What is the what is the return, and what is that return for our citizens who are taxpayers here in Farmville, right? And so looking at it through that lens and say, okay, are there any residents of Farmville who exist out there in hangers? If not, what is the benefit to us? As a town, we subsidize some of that, you know, like the FAA pays, and we get grant money, federal money to help upkeep the airport. But there's still about 60,000 or so roughly that comes out of the general fund here in the Town of Farmville, which is taxpayer money that then goes to the airport. And so as we negotiate being, you know, good stewards of taxpayers' money, we always have to take those things into consideration, and so that's part of that dialogue. But the lesson here is we, there, Ms. Amos is right in a lot of ways there, in that local government is not always really good at proactive engagement. It's just hard, particularly when it's a part-time endeavor, you know? All, a lot of us, and myself included, have a full-time day job. And families and other engagements, and this is something we're dedicating a lot of our life to. But it's hard to always be that proactive on everything. But we can endeavor to be better, and that's evident here. We could have endeavored to be a little more engaging in this process with the stakeholders who are out there. But as we navigate this, let's keep in mind that part of the taxpayers here in the Town of Farmville do fund the airport. And we have to make sure that we're not dropping too much money into it of theirs if they're not seeing a return on that investment. I take your comments to heart, and I had asked Mr. Davis earlier if we can get any kind of metrics on what that looks like for the folks who use the airport car to come into town, shop at our shops, visit our restaurants, because that would help quantify it a little bit. But all to say, thank you very much for participating. As Mr. Hardy said, it makes our lives easier when you do. When we're out here making decisions that impact people, it's nice to hear from those people instead of hearing afterwards. With that, we have a closed session. I would ask Mr. Dwyer to do I hand that to you? No, I handed it to Mr. Yolan. I'd ask Mr. Yolan to read us in.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Farmville Town Council convene a closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia in accordance with the provisions of paragraph eight dash eight dot one dot of section 2.2-3711 for the discussion of appointments to the Farmville Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion and second. Ms. Bicke, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Yolan? Mr. Hunter? Mr. Hardy? Mrs. Amos? Mr. Reed? Mr. Dwyer? Mr. Parrot?
All right, we're going to a closed session. We'll have probably some actionable items coming out concerning the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Yolan, you read us back in, please, sir.
Be my pleasure. Whereas the Farmville Town Council has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2 dash 3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the Farmville Town Council, if such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Farmville Town Council hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified by the motion convening the closed meeting are heard, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Farmville Town Council.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. McKay, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I'll call on, I believe, Mr. Parrott, who is gonna take care of our next action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sidney French to the Farmville Planning Commission for Ward E. with a term ending on June 30th, 2029.
Second.
Motion and second. Do we have to do a roll call here, Ms. Kay? Do a roll call, please.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Parrott?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Circuit Court appointment of Shawna Hunter McKinney to the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill Zachary Preston's unexpired term of February 28th, 2027.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. McKay, can we roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. There is no other business, we did the planning commission before. Is there any business, any other business before us at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, as have it. Thank you.